All right, good evening everyone. It is Tuesday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we are gathered in the Athens Clark County City Hall for a meeting of the Commission and myself, the Mayor. We have two purposes here tonight. We have a special called session and then our regularly scheduled agenda setting session. And to begin our special called session, I would like to ask Clerks Spratlin to please call the roll.
Davenport. Parker.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Wright.
Present.
Denson.
Here.
Cool. Edwards.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Thornton.
Here.
Hamby.
Here.
We have four.
All right, I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda in regards to Section F to enter into executive session for an attorney-client conference to discuss documents not releasable under the Georgia Open Records Act, which is authorized under OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash three B four.
Move to amend.
Second?
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards to amend, second from Commissioner Parker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, note that amendment, please. All right, we here are arriving first for two public hearings. The first of those is public hearing number two on the proposed FY twenty-three budget as required by the Taxpayer Bill of Rights passed by the Georgia General Assembly in nineteen ninety-nine, and we will have a substantive discussion of the budget at a work session Thursday, but tonight is that second opportunity for public input. So when you approach the podium, if you'd like to speak to the budget, you will have three minutes to speak. There's a light on Clerk Spratlin's desk, and it will turn green when your time begins, it will turn yellow when you have thirty seconds remaining, and red when that three minutes has expired. So if anyone would like to speak to the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, now is that time. Step on up. Let us know your name, and then you may begin.
My name's Rebecca Ballard. Hi there, my name's Rebecca Ballard, and I'm the Head of Children's Services at Athens Clark County Library. I am in my seventeenth year working in the Athens Regional Library System. A big part of my job is helping children of our community learn, develop, and grow so eventually they grow up to become strong community members themselves. I've heard from families many, many times over the years how our services we offer to their children are an essential part of their children's upbringing. In our library, we offer services to children beginning at birth, and our library is there to serve throughout a lifetime. I've had library patrons as young as two days old in my infant storytimes receiving nurturing programming that encourages brain development through listening to songs and stories. We offer programs for kids for all ages, from music and movement classes, STEM and technology, and of course storytimes and book clubs to get kids excited about the joy of reading. We offer outreach services outside the library, too. You can find us in schools, local parks, the farmer's market, and all sorts of community events. All of it is free for everyone. I love my job, and I love serving my community. Librarians are helpers, we really love helping people. However, it has been really difficult through all of these years to continue working in Athens because of the extremely low wages. I love Athens, I love the community we have here. I wanted to raise my family here, so I've had to make some hard choices. I used WIC and food stamps when my kids were younger. As a single mom, I have been and still am, always on the lookout for other ways to make a few extra dollars to make it to the end of the month. I sew clothes for people, I make music wherever I can find a gig, I babysit. Even after all these years, it's still a struggle to make ends meet, and I'm always waiting for the end of the month paycheck. To obtain my current position, I had to go to graduate school to attain my Masters of Library and Information Science. Graduate school isn't cheap, I depended on student loans. My salary doesn't pay enough to cover bills and student loans. I have been dreading the next few months when the payment freeze ends, I'm still not quite sure what I'm gonna do. The head of my graduate school told me when I graduated that I should think long and hard about staying in Athens, because she said, "It's a nice place to live, but they don't pay librarians enough to live." Our library is an essential part of a community. A library isn't just a building with books, the library is people who help everyone in the community, and these helpers deserve a living wage. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Everyone, I appreciate you being here, appreciate your support for folks. If you would just continue to listen with that demonstration, that way we can get through everybody who's here to join us tonight and offer public comment. And if you are gonna be speaking, if you would line up, that would facilitate an expeditious evening, so good evening.
Good evening, my name is Valerie Bell, and I am the Director of the Athens Regional Library System. I want to thank you for your time and for those who have contacted me directly about our budget. I really appreciate your interest and your concern for our library staff. As you know, and I'm sure you'll hear tonight, we do have an amazing staff, a staff who work with everyone in our community, a staff that works compassionately under sometimes very difficult situations. Since I arrived in two thousand and fifteen, it has been our mission to raise the staff salaries. We managed to do that with your help a few years ago and moved the needle from seven seventy-five an hour to ten dollars an hour. We're come to you this year asking, requesting full funding in order to raise our base salary to fifteen dollars an hour. Our library staff are integral to our community, they're hardworking, and they deserve a livable wage. So I want to thank you, I'm not gonna take up any more time, I'll see you Thursday.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. All right, good evening.
Hi, my name is John Jefferson, and I just want to thank the library staff who are here, and just want to say I'm here speaking in support of libraries and librarians as well. So I look at this from a different perspective. I'm a writer, I've written a bunch of books, I've sold a bunch of books, some of my books are in the Athens Clark County Public Library, which is a fabulous, fabulous place. I would not be a writer, a published writer, successful writer, if not for the library and the librarian in my hometown. Ms. Maggie Niles, God bless her, she was a thousand years old, one-room library in a little Alabama town, but she took time, every time I was there, to take me to the bookshelf and show me books she thought I might like. And I learned to love words and sentences and verse and meaning and ideas because of that library. And that's true and crucial for people all across Athens Clark County. The two places I go in Athens where I see the greatest diversity of people, you know, having a vital, active connection with this community are the YMCA and the library. And libraries are not just, as our first speaker said, not just places for books, they're places for people, and as social services continue, and public services continue to be cut and cut and cut, libraries become an even more important linchpin in the social fabric of our community. People depend on the library not just for books, but for access to the internet and to information that can help them build their lives. So I encourage you, I know funding's hard to find, but I encourage you to dig deep and find the funding that it takes for this library system. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Josie, and I'm the Collection Development Manager at the Athens Clark County Library. My library career began in two thousand and thirteen at the Royston Library as a part-time young adult librarian, where I often promoted and shopped for programs on my own time and my own dollar. Sometimes I was reimbursed, other times not. I also baked or prepared food programs at home before coming to work, and I was happy to do it. I know that there are part-time and other low-income library staff in Athens Clark County who dedicate this same passion and personal investment to their work, and whether they are here for a while or as I was, just beginning their journeys in public libraries, they are wholly deserving of a living wage. Equally as important are our professional librarians, many of whom are not being paid appropriate salaries even before addressing the wage compression that will result from increasing the wage floor. I have two comparable collection development job announcements here that are currently posted on the GPIS website, with starting salaries at almost eight and eleven thousand a year higher than what I currently make. This indicates that our library's professional salaries are not comparable or competitive with other libraries in the state. We have so many, we have so many talented young professionals here who have chosen to pour their energy, their passion, and higher-level education into this library. And it concerns me that tomorrow's library and community leaders will use our library as a stepping stone, taking their experiences and successes, excuse me, their experiences and successes that they gain here and investing them elsewhere. In order to retain these vital workers and to give patrons the level of excellence they have come to expect from ARLS, I ask you to invest in us the way we invest in this community. Finally, if there is concern regarding the management of the county's funding, I encourage you to request an organizational chart and salary structure so that there is accountability for your generous funding. I greatly respect the work that you do and the decisions that you all make in the best interest of everyone, so thank you all for your time this evening and for your previous and continued support of the library.
Thank you, Lindsay. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Gertz and Athens Clark Commissioners, I'm Teresa Friedlander, Vice Chair of Athens in Motion, and I'm just delighted to see you all in person after all these months and months of virtual meetings. I'm here tonight to, for two reasons. First is to encourage you to adopt the revised Complete Streets policy that was recently submitted to you by Athens in Motion, and additionally, the Athens in Motion Commission hopes you will fund a Vision Zero Specialist position in the Department of Transportation and Public Works in the FY twenty-three budget. Complete Streets and Vision Zero work in tandem to make transportation safer and more accessible for all. Athens Clark County adopted a Complete Streets policy in two thousand and twelve. This policy as written is more concept than policy. It describes what a Complete Streets policy might look like, but that does not provide actionable steps to create a safe interconnected bike and pedestrian network that we've been building throughout the county across the last couple of decades. Across these decades, the best practices have evolved nationwide and within the state of Georgia. Athens Clark County staff continue to stay ahead of the curve by incorporating these best practices into everyday operations and capital planning. One of the initial goals of the Athens in Motion Commission, which was formed in two thousand and nineteen, was to update the Complete Streets policy for Athens Clark County to guide Athens Clark transportation planners and engineers on designing streets for all road users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders of all ages and abilities. According to Smart Growth America, quote, "Complete Streets are streets for everyone." Complete Streets is an approach to planning, designing, building, operating, and maintaining streets that enables safe access for all people who need to use them. Athens in Motion Commissioners, including myself, and Transportation and Public Works staff spent many hours in subcommittee and special call meetings developing the new policy and fine-tuning the language. We believe our new Complete Streets policy will be among the best in the United States and will re-energize our community. Many of the elements of this new policy are already in use. By adopting the revised Complete Streets policy, the Athens Clark County Government will ensure that our high standards for transportation planning and development will continue to improve. We hope you will adopt the new Complete Streets policy without delay. An important part of Athens in Motion's mission is reducing traffic fatalities and serious injuries by implementing a Vision Zero plan. Question, how many traffic-related deaths are acceptable? Answer, zero.
Thank you, Teresa.
Am I done? Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor Gertz and Commissioners, thank you for having us. I'm just gonna share quickly a personal experience that I have.
Could you give us your name for the record?
Oh, Janet Smiley. I am now the new Children Specialist at the Watkinsville Library, but the post that I had prior to going to Watkinsville was as a twenty-two-hour-a-week manager of the Lay Park Resource Center. I don't know if you're familiar with the Lay Park Community Center, they do outstanding work for the neediest kids in the city, in the city of Athens. The small library, the resource center that we have there, provides a place for the kids who are putting in, these kids are putting in twelve- and thirteen-hour days. They come from homes where their, their parents are working late, late hours, and they get left at the Lay Park Resource Center and Community Center until all hours. The kids are very needy, we got a great program going for them, we had UGA mentors coming in and working with the children one-on-one on their reading skills, which are sorely lacking from the pandemic and the closure of the schools for such a long time. We were rolling right along, however, my Cobra benefits from the job I had before were due to run out. The price, I'm a sixty-year-old woman, I can't get cheap health insurance. The price of my health insurance, working twenty-two hours a week for the Athens Library, would not even cover my health insurance, never mind anything else. So despite the fact that we had worked so hard to build up this great program and these kids and families were depending on us, I had to leave that position, and it broke my heart, and I still feel guilt for that because the kids were so responsive and so needy, and we were doing such good work there. The library, the Resource Center had to actually close, and the mentor program was, came to an end, and that was because no one would take the job for such a low, below poverty rate wage. So all that good work went down the drain, and I just, I need you to know that Athens Library and the Resource Centers at East Athens and Lay Park are doing necessary vital work to the most needy people in Athens and are getting no support financially, hardly at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Good evening.
Good evening, good to see y'all again. My name is Sam Raffel. If I asked you to raise your hand if you had applauded the life-saving actions of one of our fire and emergency services personnel a few months ago, I suspect every hand would be in the air. If I then asked you to raise your hand if you wanted to exponentially increase the number of lives saved by our personnel each year by properly equipping them to perform to their level of training, how many hands would still be in the air? That's the question before us now. We have over one hundred and twenty Athens Clark County Fire and Emergency Services Personnel trained to the level of basic EMT or higher. We continue to perform at a level much below that of basic EMT because of a lack of equipment, and it is my understanding that we are delaying equipping even this level to our trained and highly capable personnel to do their jobs. Denying or delaying prompt access to definitive life-saving care to citizens of Athens Clark County during a time-sensitive, life-threatening emergency is immoral. To equip our EMT-trained firefighters to perform to their level of training and to improve their training is ridiculously inexpensive and could be done quickly. The first step is to get our basic EMTs the equipment they need to do their damn jobs: cardiac monitors, breathing treatments, chewable baby aspirin for heart attacks, epinephrine for severe allergic reactions, et cetera. The decision to equip our emergency services personnel to perform to their level of training and to improve their training will save lives, for that there is no doubt. The decision to withhold equipment that delays critical pre-hospital or prolonged implementation to these very capable Athens Clark County employees will cost lives, for that there is no doubt. The decision is obvious, the decision is common sense, and it may take leadership at the highest levels, at this level, of our county government to get it done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Esti Bell. I'm here on behalf of the taxpayer. My taxes went up last year, and I understand that, wasn't no problem. My tax went up this year, and I just like to ask y'all, when it stop? I'm here for the elders, for the retired peoples, and they on a fixed income. Do you care? Search your heart. My daughter, I'm speaking for her, but she's right there. You went up on her taxes from eight hundred to fourteen hundred dollars. When it's gonna stop? Do you care? I care. I deal with all the peoples. I'm here for them and myself. Search your heart. When do it stop? When we get back to the community? These people worked all their life here, schoolteachers, on a fixed income, widows, don't have a husband. When it gonna stop? Because we in a time, gas, food, everything is hot, and then you gonna carry up us high taxes at a time like this? Search your heart. Care, do you care? That's all I have to say. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bell, appreciate it. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Danielle Bonanno, and I am the Community Engagement Specialist for Acceptance Recovery Center, as well as the Director of Community Outreach for Athens Pride and Queer Collective. I want to start off with a quick story of a local trans woman of color named Violet. I met Violet in two thousand and twenty during my internship at Divas Who Win here in Athens. Violet was homeless and living with substance misuse and mental health challenges. The night before, she had slept in the woods after being turned away from the Salvation Army. She was told in order to stay at the shelter, she would have to present like her gender assigned at birth. She was told she should take off her wig, makeup, and women's clothes so that she could then access the shelter's resources and reside at the shelter. This is not the only story of a black trans woman who has turned away from the Salvation Army. I could tell you the stories of Brooklyn, Amaya, Pebbles, Africa, Shetara, Unique, Dream, all the trans women of color I have come into contact with over the last two years have all had these same experiences. I am aware this meeting is extremely important as there is a chance this could be the community's final opportunity to make much-needed decisions involving the budget and the needs of our community. Everywhere you look, you see individuals who are trapped in homelessness. Working in the addiction recovery field, I often see many clients left with no options when it comes time for them to transition back into the community. Housing is a barrier for these individuals because most are also returning citizens. There are no housing resources for this population with, which often leads to relapse and re-entry into the system. Homelessness is also a critical issue for transgender people. One in five transgender individuals have experienced homelessness at some point in their lives. Athens needs to be more intentional about how we address this issue to ensure transgender people do not continue to face discrimination in housing and in homeless services. I would like to see ACC make adjustments to the budget to provide emergency housing, shelter, and support to our homeless population, especially queer or trans black people of color. I would also like to see funds set aside specifically for LGBTQ youth to prevent homelessness and recidivism. In closing, I want to say if ACC is providing any funding to the Salvation Army, that the amount of funding they receive should be reconsidered, and the funds should go toward a new city shelter, as well as to agencies that work to support and rehabilitate displaced individuals in an inclusive and affirming way. And the last thing I want to say, if there is any opportunity for any of this to happen that myself and the rest of the Board of Athens Queer Collective or Pride and Queer Collective would be willing to assist with any kind of creation of a strategic plan or anything else associated with a new shelter here in the city, thanks.
Thank you, Danielle. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Sean Rible, and I'm the Digital Media Manager at the Athens Clark County Library. I've worked at the library over the past seven years, I love working at the library, and the thing that coworkers are always talking about is why is the pay so low? Ever since I worked there and probably a long time before that, and nothing ever seems to get done, and the pay is really, really low. You can look at any type of position at the library, whether it's IT or librarian, it's like the lowest in the nation. It's as low as it can be. And most of the people who work at the library, they've worked their butts off, they're, you know, they have bachelor's degrees, they have master's degrees, they're multilingual, they're doing passports, which is extremely complicated, and all sorts of other things. And I just see people leaving all the time, we can't get new people in, and then the people who already are working there and doing so much have to do the other jobs that we can't fill. And I don't know what I can say, you know, to prove that the library's doing a lot in this community. I think everybody knows how important it is. I just want to say, it's just so frustrating to see everybody struggle with the library and to see nothing happen for so many years, and to see it now when it's, you know, there's articles being written about it, that we still can't bring, like, most employees up to a living wage. So that's all I have to say, you know, I'm just really disappointed.
Thank you, Sean.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Shimobio B. Drew. I am also an employee of the Athens Clark County Library, I work as the Regional Circulation Services Coordinator, and I'd like to speak in support of Athens Clark County Government providing us with the funding needed to bring our employees to livable wages. I'm a longtime resident of Athens, I grew up here, and I'm a longtime patron, I've been going to the library on Baxter Street since I've been a kid, also to the Watkinsville one as well, and I'm sure you're aware that we have, you know, five libraries in our county here. I can speak from a hiring basis that we have had lower number of applicants, as I'm sure a lot of people have been experiencing, and I know that's in part to the wages. Some of the people that I have had the chance to interview have talked about, you know, like, could that ever go up, could it increase? My staff that I currently have are also struggling with making those decisions. I know the library field has often been thought of as a career that has low pay, and the people who work there do it because they love to, but they also have to be able to afford to. You know, with the rising costs of housing in Athens, I'm sure a lot of people's rent has increased, mine is coming up this summer, it's making it that, you know, people cannot afford to work in the library field and stay there and afford to live in Athens. A lot of people in Athens are not aware of how the library is funded. I know my own grandparents believed as I know my own grandparents believed, as many did, that we were part of the county going up to $15 an hour, and we are not, because we are an independent organization, and we receive our funding from multiple sources, because, you know, libraries are often underfunded, and so gotta seek money where you can get it. And so I think the community support is definitely there to increase the wages for the staff. We do amazing work. We get amazing community support. We do a lot of great stuff at the wages we are at, and I know we could do even better if we're able to keep, especially if we're able to keep the staff that we have here. And we want the staff to be reflective of the community, and the only way they can do it is if you can get community members who can afford to work at the library and stay in Athens. I would just like to finish that. The staff can't afford to remain at the library, and I also believe our community can't afford to lose the library. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nikhae. Good evening.
Hi. Okay, just waiting for the green light. Okay. Gotta hold my sign up. My name is Jamie Mendenhall Turner. I work at the Athens-Clark County Library in the Collection Management Department alongside Lindsay Josie, who spoke earlier. There is a constant chain of effect that keeps happening at the library. Someone comes in for an entry-level position. We train them. They work for a little bit, realize they're not making a living wage. They go somewhere else. So we have to put out the position again in, what, three, four months, only for the same thing to happen. Our turnover rate is like a never-ending revolving door, and it is becoming really frustrating to lose good people who could do so much good for the library, who love their job, but they can't stay there because they can't afford to live in Athens, or, yeah, they can't afford to live. I myself, if I were not married, if I were not living in Madison County, because I can't afford to live in Clark County now, yeah, I couldn't afford rent here as a single person. And it's really disheartening, too, because before, my wife, Alita Mendenhall Turner, is currently the Branch Manager of the Madison County Library. And before that, she worked in the Circulation Department as a Circulation Supervisor. And this was after, and after 10 years of working there, she was still making less than what an entry-level cashier makes at Target. They can go into Target and work an entry-level position for $15 an hour, and I find that really embarrassing, that a corporation can afford to pay their employees $15 and not our local government for the library. Every time that revolving door keeps going, and I tell you, it never stops. I've yet to see it stop. Every time it keeps going, morale lessens, because it's a constant game of, who is this person? You know, weren't they just here like two months ago? We got a new person? Oh, great. It's a constant learning for us, and it's frustrating. It's a waste of our money and our resources to have to keep funding that revolving door. And for once, I'd like to see that stop with a living wage for everybody who deserves it. And to the commissioner who said that they couldn't understand if the library was appreciated, yes, sir! We are appreciated! If you have to say that, you have not been in our library, and I invite you to come at 4:00 in the afternoon when the teens are in there. I invite you to come in there when it's cold outside and it is hot!
Thank you, Jamie.
Come in when the homeless need us.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Alan Jones, and I live at 195 Xavier Drive. And I'm speaking on a few things tonight, but I will say that, as the young woman mentioned about the homeless issue, that is something that can help you on the HRC score, since you guys know I love that one. But I've been working, as you know, with Timothy Forward for a number of years, kind of listening to the people on Timothy and advocating for their needs, so I'm here again for that. And this one's kind of a small-budget request, but as it says, I think in James, "You do not get because you do not ask." But I've heard a lot of complaints over the years and more as I'm on the commission trail these days, knocking on doors, that the grass just doesn't get mowed on Timothy very frequently. Something simple, we are considered a rural roadway in the middle of town, and there's a number of other roadways that get that same treatment: River Bend, Research, Nowhere, Smoky Road, a number of pieces like that, that the rural designation means that we get our right-of-way cleaned and mowed every 11 to 12 weeks. If you did that to your yard, you'd probably get code violations. If you're not in the rural area, you're in the center of city, then you get it every five to six weeks. So I'd like to ask you to talk more with Central Services, to see if there can be a way to either reduce that rural mowing schedule, or get rid of it altogether, or get another team doing something to change that interval up. I also want to speak for a moment on, you guys are all aware of the sticker shock going on right now, as the one lady said about the property values. You guys don't have any say in that. That's happening nationally. But I do appreciate the fact that you are looking at, since we had, what, a 12% tax increase due to the good work you guys have done on economic development, that a 12% increase in the amount of taxes, let me put it the best way, that is a time to, instead of just spending an extra 12%, because we have it, but to consider lowering the millage rate. And I like what the Georgia Assembly is suggesting, to work with increasing our homestead exemption, as well as what they're looking to do to freeze the property valuations for our poorer and elderly people in this area so that they can keep their homes. I think those are going to be critical things to making the city remain as a livable area. But we still have to pay for stuff, and we have the rising tax revenues, and I appreciate your works on economic development and hope you can continue to incentivize business growth and limit the amount of restrictions you're placing on businesses that are causing them to look elsewhere or just move to Oconee County. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Sheridan. I'm here on behalf of the majority of people in Clark County, the taxpayers that don't get recognized too much, the 60% of people who don't own their own home here in Clark County. Now, we've heard a couple people talk about the property tax reduction, but I wanted to come today to suggest perhaps it would be fairer and more equitable to reduce sales taxes, not property taxes. Sales taxes affect everybody in the county, but sales taxes are also one of the most regressive taxes, forms of taxes, that you can impose. They disproportionately hurt working-class people, lower-income people. So like, for instance, myself, as a graduate student at UGA, I only make $2,000 a month, and I'm paying 50, about 50, 55% of that for rent, utilities, other expenses, but then I have to go feed myself, purchase clothes, et cetera, and all of that's being taxed at sales taxes. For someone like me that's on such a low income, that can be, you know, really harmful to have to pay extra money on top of the food I need to survive. There's a lot of great data on sales taxes that you can look at. There's one article that I like called "Options for Less Regressive Sales Tax," and that's from the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy. So I just encourage you to, perhaps when you're considering how to fund government services, to bear in mind that while reducing property taxes is great, that's not necessarily beneficial for the majority of people here in the county. I did have some other questions, but since there's so many people waiting to speak, I'll just maybe send an email or something. But thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening.
My name is Elizabeth Hood, and I've lived in Athens for almost a decade now. I love it here. I have never felt so much welcome and belonging as I did when I moved to Athens, and I feel that connection even more as the Lead Assistant for Teen Services at the Athens-Clark County Library. Our library is a manifestation of all of Athens' best qualities. When you walk through the door of an Athens library, every person in a name tag is ready to do everything in their power to meet your need, whether it's help with homework or information about local food resources. In the Teen Services Department, we work so hard to create enriching programs for Athens youth. We've partnered with local organizations to create supplementary education modules on environmental science, philosophy, and creative writing. We annually organize Bling Your Prom, which this year provided over 150 Athens teens with free formal wear and accessories for prom, all donated by members of the community. We have an active teen volunteer association in which teens are able to practice job skills and nurture a heart for service in a fun, safe, social environment. We do all this in addition to typical librarian duties, despite a revolving door of staff. I have lost coworkers who say things like, "I love working here. I want to stay. I just can't afford it." We struggle to fill positions that are coveted in other places. People with passion for community service are being forced to choose paths that are different, just to make ends meet. I'm incredibly lucky to have a partner who encouraged me to pursue this career change despite the staggering pay cut, but I can't help but feel ashamed when I can barely contribute to our household expenses. I feel as if the work I'm doing, this challenging, meaningful work, while invaluable to my community, is not valued by my community leaders. That feeling of belonging that I've always felt in Athens flickers every time I get my paycheck. Please prove to us that you value these library services that benefit everyone, from the homeowners blowing up your phone about property taxes, to the people seeking our help to find temporary housing. The library wants desperately to continue making Athens a place where everyone can feel welcome, but we can't keep doing that without a fairly paid staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Gerst and Commissioners. My name is Sharling Woodham Brickman, PhD. I only use my suffix in this conversation because I was a child of poverty and dysfunction who found solace in the daily, daily in the public library. You see, I rode my bike there daily to read and escape the chaos of my home. There I discovered Nancy Drew and Thirteen Alabama Ghost and Mrs. Pepperpot. The library building helped me in this way, but the librarians, it was the people, the librarians, who scaffolded me in becoming a 33-year veteran educator, a writer, and a specialist in the field of, excuse me, a specialist in the field of play, specifically the power of play and recess in supporting mental health. Thank you, librarians. Our librarians in Athens are a predominantly female population who deserve a living wage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Woodham Brickman. Good evening.
Good evening. And good evening to all of you. My name is Jane Russell. Currently, I serve as the Chair of the Board of Trustees of the Athens-Clark County Library, which is a distinct honor for me. Would like to certainly echo everything that's been said in support of the library and the library staff, and don't need to go into my affection for libraries. I hope it's pretty obvious. But two things that occurred to me. One is that this, the comments about attrition, and I think if you've, I suspect most all of you have experienced working with a staff, if you train a staff, you want that training to be of value to you for a long time. You don't want to do this revolving door thing. So that's something that your dollars would support for a long period of time. The other thing is that in, and our board certainly has looked at this budget and is in full support of it, the idea of avoiding salary compression by getting this $400,000, I believe it's $430,000, will allow this to be fixed really well for a while, and I think that's crucial. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jane. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Erica Massey, and I am the Resource Center Manager. I also work for the Athens-Clark County Library, but at the Aaron Heard and Lay Park Community Centers. My position was created because we have a hot, high turnover rate. My position was created because two part-timers could not live on our pay. I have worked for Athens Regional Library Systems since June 2018, right after college, and I was really excited. I enjoyed those four years. I met really passionate, amazing people, but every day I can walk into work and find out someone's not going to be there, because they are not getting paid enough. I've seen several amazing library workers move on to different library systems or start a new career path entirely after working for us. Although working for the public is really, really hard, as we all know, they never say it's because of being yelled at, or emotions, or the feelings they have, or community. They always say, you know, "It's really the pay. I can't do this. I need insurance. I need benefits." I currently make $25,000, and that's not that much. I looked up a similar job that would accept me without a master's degree on the Georgia Libraries website, a Program Manager at White County Library, and they listed their job at $42,000 as starting rate. That's $17,000 difference with possible increase because I have experience, which is not always necessary. I really love the library, and I really love Clark County. That's why I'm here, and that's why I am in the community centers. Even though it wasn't that much more money, it was going to be amazing to work with those kids. So I did it, and I'm really excited about what we're going to do there and all that kind of stuff, but it's not sustainable at all to assume that people are going to keep doing this every single time, that we have several jobs that just always stay open, and I think that's always going to be the case until we can solve this problem. I would really like y'all to honor the full budget request, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Erica. Good evening.
Good evening. Cameron J. Harrelson, Henderson Extension. Now, if I'm not as confused as everyone else, District 2. Hi, Commissioner Parker. I wanted to say tonight that I am here as the host of Classic City Crime Podcast, a podcast here locally that has focused on unsolved homicides, and specifically those that have been adjudicated in the past, to look for the lessons that all of us in this room might learn all these years later. I want to start out with a few numbers. 250,000, that's the number of unsolved homicides in the United States of America that we have record of. 37 is the number of unsolved homicides under the jurisdiction of the Atlanta Police Department, a much larger jurisdiction than our own, 37. 40 is the number of unsolved homicides under the jurisdiction of the Athens-Clark County Police Department, and I'm not saying that's a thought of their own. Tara Louise Baker was a bold, bright, and beautiful University of Georgia Law student in 2001, when she was murdered in her East Athens, Georgia, home. For 10 years, her family was denied a death certificate, unable to close accounts, continuously being victimized by the stealing of her identity. And now, 22 years later, her family still has no answers as to who killed her and why. Unfortunately, 22 years later, Tara's story is not alone, and it's not one of isolation. She joins 40 other families in Athens-Clark County for which this experience has become a reality. Now, if you multiply 40 families by five or six people each, you do the math of how many people that affects. And as you can imagine, in my work for victim advocacy, I've often petitioned our police department for resources, if nothing more than for reassurance to the families that their cases have not been forgotten. And though I do believe they are vigilant in their response to current crime, the reality is that with our increase in nonviolent crime here in Athens and across the country, the ACCPD staffing leaves little room for funds and time to be allocated to the hundreds of individuals affected by unsolved homicides in this county. Now, I know, and it's no surprise to all of you, that this is a divisive time in our politics. I know that some on this body might be wary of adjusting funding for police, and I understand that. I know that others understand the importance of that funding, and I concur. As you look at the budget, let's give these families peace. Let's give them answers and justice, after all, that will lead to a safer community for all of us. And I want to say this, too: The problem today is not with those currently being encountered us. And I want to say this, too. The problem today is not with those currently being encountered by and dealt with by our criminal justice system like the UGA. Football player you mentioned, Commissioner Link, that's not the problem. The problem is those that have been ignored by the criminal legal system and continue to walk our communities every single day. I urge you to help me and help this community bring closure to these 40 families.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Susan Monavruti. I'm an Athens resident for the last 10 years, and I'm here to speak on the budget a little bit. And I just want to say out from the start that I am in support of the library, and I think you should fully fund the request and maintain the $15 an hour thing. And I think it's about roughly $200,000 more, Mayor Gertz, that you need to get that up to the $430 or whatever. So do it. It should be done. But at the same time, you can create an increase in revenue from FY '22 of about 2%, and that will help the hurting people in this community who are suffering the ravages of inflation. Those are the schoolteachers. Those are the retirees. Those are the people who have just lost a spouse and are on fixed income. So you can do that. I have ways to do it. The first way to do it is to really look at the financing that one of your government employees showed you at the last meeting, which if you do the calculations, it's roughly $3.1 million that is extra revenue available, which can be used to reduce the millage rate. And you can get that millage rate down to 2.2. You can get it down a whole mill, and this is how you can do it. I have three options here. I'll send you a spreadsheet if you like. But a lot of it involves a lot of your pet projects out of the general fund, which includes, again, the $642,000 you have there, you know, just sitting unallocated. Then you have $20,000 for digital service. You have $90,000 for AADA, public events. We have the Classic Center coming in. We have the Classic Center Authority coming in. They're going to have all kinds of events. Why do we need to, you know, have $90,000 of general fund money, is my understanding on that, not hotel motel? And then you have even more. You have $156,000 Beach Haven, which I know is a pet project of Commissioner Hools', and he suggested at the last meeting that that was for trails and stuff. But yet, if you look at it and the details of it all, it's for $96,000 for a facility supervisor and $39,400 for part-time hours. So we don't even have, my understanding is that project doesn't even exist yet. So let's not fund the people to run it until we have a real thing. Then also, you have $200,000 for a service leisure plan. You have $250,000 for the following year. Why do we need that when we have all this SPOS, T-SPOS committee people working on all these plans, and you have a strategic plan, and you have a pavement plan, and you have this plan, and you have that? I mean, it just seems like we have tons of plans. And then also, you had $2.1 million towards parks and maintenance, and I'm running out of time, but I just shaved 1.5 million right off the top of that. Anyway, the bottom line, you can get 6 million really fast, really fast. You can get the millage rate down to 2.2, which is reasonable, and it gives you a 2% increase over FY '22. That's something people can handle. This is what we expect Commissioners to do. We expect you to sit there with a book like this and go through the budget.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. I've got more. I'll send you an email.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Heather Lee Stengel, and I live at 235 River Hill Drive, currently sort of District 10. I spoke last week, so I'm going to keep it really short. I really appreciate y'all's support. Talking to you about the library, it feels like there is a lot of support out there, and I appreciate y'all working with us. But mostly, as was also pointed out last week, we are not always a super extroverted bunch, so there are definitely library people here who have not gotten up to speak, although we had some excellent speakers tonight, y'all. But if anyone's here for the library and hasn't spoken up, if y'all want to stand or wave and let them know, yes, we've got a big crowd, yes. So thank you. We appreciate you. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Heather. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Teresa Cullen. I have served eight years as a trustee on the Board of Trustees for the library. I have two more years to go, but after hearing these stories tonight, which I was, in my heart, I knew they existed, but to hear people get up and stand up and talk about their need to have more money in their life, I am so touched by that, and I know you are, too. I wanted them to know that we, as a board, did not vote on a three-year ask to get up to $15 an hour. We scuttled that, and we voted to go unanimously to ask once and for all to get our lowest-paid workers up to what is called a living wage. We all know that is euphemistic. I went to Kroger yesterday for a few things, and I got a $200 bill. So to assage my horror, I went to the gas station only to find out that on my economical Camry, I owed $50. I don't know how people exist on these low wages. Hearing them, I know as a board member, I am embarrassed and disgusted and chagrined, and the only thing I know to do that matters to me as an individual is to resign, because I don't want to be on a board that somehow represents an organization that can't get funding enough to support people to live on. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. We'll see how this goes with the two-year-old. But my name is Benita Davenport, and I reside in 286 Carr Bethlehem Road in Bethlehem, Georgia, and I would like to bring forth my observations to the budget for the mayor's proposed budget, rather. I apologize. There's no formalities to this because I just viewed it last night. However, my interest is on behalf of Ridge Rising Community Initiative, as well as ICUC, community events, primarily in the interest of the Juneteenth event and the proposed budget. Mayor, I had a few choice words for you, but I apologize because I see that I had an error in my mailing system for an email that I forwarded to you and a few of your constituents. So I digress and not, I forgive myself for assuming you did not respond because you had no interest. But in that notion, I would like to address the goal of the broad and deep public engagement, noting that you had mentioned return to a higher level of community events and programs. I do feel that the Juneteenth event can benefit in that $90,000 that's allocated to the hotel motel revenue, and would encourage you to meet with the Juneteenth Collective that is currently formed. And further in the proposed budget, you spoke of convening and holding a Juneteenth committee, noting that committees are appointed by mayors, and we are, well, the Juneteenth Collective is currently not selected by the mayor. So I'd like to know how you come up with your selections and suggest that those candidates who are already doing the footwork and groundwork be grandfathered into that committee. Also, noting that we should start to look into the Leisure Services Master Plan to incorporate the community center for the district of Rolling Ridge and that area. Not sure what district it is now as well, but those are things that I definitely brought to my attention in light of the police youth cadet. There was an ad, I mean, excuse me, there was an article in athensreview.com that noted that in 2020, eight cadets were hired, six were added, three were certified police officers, one remains. So in 2020, we went from 11 hired to eight, to six, to three, to one. And I'm not sure if that cadet curriculum is adequate because two of those said candidates went on to other jurisdictions. So I feel like we are going into a rabbit hole by funding things that we don't know for certain are benefiting our youth and our community.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to taxpayer bill rights hearing on FY '23 budget? All right. Thank you, everyone. As a quirk of procedure, there is an opportunity for general comment on the FY '23 budget. So if anyone would like to make additional comment under that category, now is that time. All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and begin discussion of new business. And so for that, I need a motion for suspension of rules.
I move.
Got a motion from Commissioner Thornton. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I've got a second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So first order of new business is a Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank Grant Acceptance and Agreement. So do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I move that we approve Option 1, A, B, C.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright and a second from Commissioner Link. Attorney Drake's there in ordinance associated with this?
I pulled it up. Is that item number one, Mayor?
Item number one, yes. Is that a budget amendment ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the Transportation Special Purpose Local Options Sales Tax 2018 Program Budget so as to provide grant funding if awarded from the State Road and Tollway Authority, SRTA, for Project Number Eight, Talisi Road Bridge Replacement Project, and for other purposes.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Drake. So is there a...
Second.
I think we've got motion and a second. Is there any input from motion or second?
Very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Moving on to item number two, the SPOS 2020, Project Number Two, Affordable Housing, Added Financial Commitment for North Downtown. Of course, we discussed this at our work session last week and sought the opportunity to close the funding gap so that we would have sufficient funds to complete Phase One of the North Downtown redevelopment. And I appreciate Commissioners' consideration of this opportunity so that we can honor what we promised to the people of the community here in Athens-Clark County.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Hamby, any comment?
No, sir. Looking forward to having this project move along.
Thank you. Commissioner Thornton?
Yes, we've come too far to turn around, so we've heard all the issues and concerns. I feel good moving forward.
Right. Thank you. Any other comment regarding this item? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all. Entertain a motion to enter into executive session following the agenda-setting session.
I move to enter into executive session following the agenda-setting session.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Hool. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We will now take up the agenda-setting agenda.
Can I make the motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn following conclusion.
May I just...
Yes.
Maybe it's best to make it, get a motion. I guess you've done that. You got a motion, basically, to take a break from this meeting, and we'll go back to the special call meeting after this, correct?
That's correct.
So I don't know if a motion to adjourn would be in order, maybe a motion to...
Motion to...
What would the motion be?
Pause to a time certain, till after the agenda setting?
Pause to cover the agenda session?
Yeah.
And return.
Yeah.
All right. Motion from Commissioner Wright to pause the special-called session for the purpose of the agenda-setting session. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we will now consider our agenda-setting agenda. And so you have that in front of you. We do have several opportunities for public input on this. There will be an opportunity regarding the consent agenda. There will be an opportunity regarding old and new business, and then separate opportunities on each of the two planning and zoning items. So currently, the consent agenda is comprised of items one through 10. Is any member of the public interested in speaking to any of these items on the agenda-setting agenda, items one through 10, which comprise the consent agenda? All right. Would any Commissioner like to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right. We might be moving in the other direction. All right. Next is opportunity for resident input on old and new business, and those are items 11 through 22. Would anyone like to speak to any of those items, 11 through 22? All right. Hearing none, we'll begin discussion. Item 11 is formalizing the establishment of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, which we previously discussed. Commissioner Davenport, you asked that we hold this. Would you like to follow up with any input?
I'd like to keep this off of consent. We are at the final stage. Unfortunately, Sukie has some death in her family, so I'm giving her time to bereave, but, and also I need to finish, finalize with our attorneys, but there should be a CDO by the, via email by the end of the week.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Davenport. Any further input on 11? All right. Yes, Commissioner Hool?
I just wanted to share with colleagues, I had the opportunity of speaking with Sukie at the Marigold Festival in Winterville, and she sounded amenable to the idea of changing the language from based on commission district to just based on a balance of inside and outside the service area. So as I understand it, if that's helpful for you, Commissioner Davenport, for colleagues, that would meet the same goal that I think she was trying to seek of geographic diversity.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I appreciate that discussion with staff, but the Director of Solid Waste isn't authorized to change a staff recommendation. You know, if y'all want to talk about that, I think negotiating with staff behind the scenes on an existing standing recommendation, we should avoid that.
Thank you, Manager Williams. And we'll certainly receive material from you, Commissioner Davenport, and consider that as your commission-defined option, should you choose to bring that forward.
Yeah.
All right. Item 12 is SPOS 2011, Project 27, Seagrave Strive Memorandum of Agreement and Preliminary Plans Approval. As you can see in the agenda report, this involves a bridge over creek that will feature shared funding. Anyone like to address this item? Would folks like to place this on the consent agenda?
Consent.
I guess I'll say a really quick thank you to Ronnie for helping spur this along.
All right. Thank you. And I believe that's Dr. Parker. Is that correct?
As of today.
Dr. Parker, thank you very much. All right. Congratulations. All right. Moving on to item 13. This is SPOS 2020, Project 30, Airport Capital Improvements, which regard Runway 2-20 pavement rehabilitation. And this is a construction services contract award. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Do we have bids back for this, Manager Williams?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. So 13, we'll move to consent, if everybody's okay with that? All right. 14 is the SPOS 2011, Project 22, Youth and Community Enrichment Facility, and this is the project site selection criteria. Commissioner Link?
Yeah. This, I want to leave it off consent because there is a public input meeting on this site selection issue. This is for the community center intended for the West Broad area. So there is a public meeting Thursday night, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Rock Springs Park. So anybody who has any broad interest in this project, I encourage you to attend that meeting. This is the community center that is intended to be in partnership with Athens Land Trust, with Community Kitchen, as the center that houses the young urban builders, young urban farmers, community garden, outdoor pavilion, a broad range of services and facilities for the community that are much, much needed and have been a long time coming. So please, Rock Springs Park, 6:30 to 8 o'clock p.m. on Thursday.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Myers?
Yes, as the Chair of the Site Selection for this project and others, I want to reiterate Commissioner Link's urging of people to go to this public meeting that's on Thursday. We will be in a budget meeting at that time, so I, and it was, it's a quick turnaround time, so there's only a couple of people from the Site Selection Committee. time. So there's only a couple of people from the Site Selection Committee who can be there. But I do want to reiterate or explain to the public that this is a very first step of a process where there will be many opportunities down the line for public engagement as we move forward. So and, you know, this is something, if you want to see what the, what is now being looked at, which will drive the selection, you can look at this agenda report online and see the two tables that explain the technical and values criteria that are being reviewed on Thursday.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further input on this item? All right. We're going to move on to item 15. This is the Complete Streets Policy. And I think as a member of the public noted earlier when advocating for the Vision Zero Coordinator, this really is enhancement of something that we approved in concept several years ago. So any input on this item? Commissioner Link?
I just want to suggest that we keep it off consent to allow the public to read it. It's a pretty long document, and I know there's a lot of interest in the community in this issue. So I just want to say, let's leave it off consent and ensure that we get as much opportunity for input as possible.
Commissioner Myers?
I'm going to follow up on that. As someone who was on Athens in Motion when we were doing the initial drafts of this, this is a really important policy because it puts into, in policy, into the words, what our staff is already doing. And this is something that's been very, the staff from our Transportation Public Works have been very involved in the development and are very supportive of this. This is also something that enables us to be more eligible for federal grants where there's a lot of emphasis on safety and users of all kinds of the road, on the road. So I'm really excited about this coming forward. And I agree, it would be wonderful to get more input on that, but hopefully we'll all be in support of that among my colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thornton?
I'm not as excited, but I'm glad we are taking it off of the agenda for consent. And my concern is, we've done a lot of work with AIM and the master plan. It looks like we kind of put the cart before the horse. It looks like the complete street study envisioned zero should have preceded some of the monies that we've spent in some of these areas. So I'm glad it's off of consent and, but not for the same reasons my colleagues are.
Any further input? All right. We'll move on to item 16. This is Contract Renewal for the Neighborhood Leaders Program. And everybody has at their place an amended agenda report based on the prosperity committees, or Commissioner Thornton as Chair of Prosperity Committee. Would you like to make any comment?
I have no comments. I'm appreciative to staff for facilitating this conversation. There was a lot of conversations, and Commissioner Myers was very helpful in identifying some, some things that staff followed up with. I do appreciate the way we're... I do appreciate page three, the structure that we have here. I hope we move forward on this. Question, Manager Jones, are we, we, we were struggling with the, that small gap for May and June? Are we, are we good? This doesn't have any...
Yeah, it does. Okay. Staff has identified a funding source.
So, okay.
And it's updated on...
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, I would move forward on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further input?
Yeah.
Commissioner Myers?
I just want to follow up that I was, we had a really productive conversation led by Commissioner Thornton here and staff the other day, and that for, that that $79,000 shortfall is being addressed in this budget item as well. So I think it's, this is not just for the contract for next year, but also for this, the difference that needs to be made in there. And I haven't had time to fully read over all of this. So I'm glad, you know, we're going to keep it off of the consent agenda for this evening.
Commissioner Parker?
Yeah. So I want to thank the Prosperity Committee for their work to ensure that these folks have the resources they need to undertake the very important work that they do. When I look at item number five, under Facts and Issues pertaining to the structure of the annual renewal process, I'm reminded of discussions we had, perhaps it was February, about, with all of the neighborhood leaders there with us on WebEx, kind of talking about their own experiences of the project, and noting then that it would be great to have some of their reflections on their process, as well as an opportunity for them to provide formal input to this body on what they're seeing as community needs as a part of our budgeting process moving forward, worked into, you know, the way that this program evolves in future years. Now, in the first box, you know, in this chain of review and renewal, it does say that FCCIS and HCD sort of provide a conceptual scope. And so that may involve, when we're talking about FCCIS, like some, you know, conversation with the neighborhood leaders themselves about what should the scope of our work be? What are we seeing as community needs? What are we seeing as limitations of what we currently do? I need to, I will say, I need to get more information about that. But I guess I say all this to say, I would love to see their explicit role in defining the future direction of their work based on their experiences on the ground, as well as their opportunity to give recommendations to us sort of codified somewhere. I think that first bit might fit in here. But I just wanted to reiterate that suggestion that came up from that conversation a couple of months ago. And so I may be having conversations with the neighborhood leaders between now and then to see if they'd be interested in working together to ensure that their role in this conceptual scope in the renewal process is clearly outlined here.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to follow up, looking at Facts and Issues seven, that talks about the dollars here. And in past discussions around the budget, we've talked about whether our allocation allows for FCCIS to provide raises for neighborhood leaders over time. I know there's been reference to other funding sources, but then I'm hearing that alongside funding shortfall this year. And so I'm just trying to understand if someone can put it plainly for me. Does the way this is drafted up accompany some kind of other revenue source that's going to ensure that the folks that a few years ago we were ensuring were paid a living wage will continue to be and will also be able to access raises if they're sustained over time?
Is Steph?
The contract is $750,000, and it's been so for the past several years. The intent is for it to be $750,000 again in this budget, which does not account for an increase. I think that conversation could be had, and I think it will be had during the next budget meeting, probably on Thursday.
Okay.
And that's basically, was our discussion, was that gap, making sure we could take care of that gap and get, make sure leaders are, are at least, they don't skip a pay. But because we have it written here, and it's even more reason for it to be upon consensus, that as we're working on the budget process, I do not see, I see that part of the discussion because it's going to look like everything else. Where do you take it from? So this is what's being presented. But I do see part of the budget season looking in into that, Commissioner Hul. I also wanted to, do I still at the floor?
I'm sorry. Go. Yeah, if I just may follow up. Do we have like a rough estimate? You know, I know we're all trying to work through how to negotiate all the things we want to build into the budget while also staying mindful of mileage rate and such. So having a ballpark figure of what we would need to have in mind, at least between now and Thursday, would help me out. Do we have that at all?
System Manager Jones, is that something we can gather?
Tim Johnson is working on that. That was part of the discussion also.
And if I remember correctly, I think I chimed in and said, let's hopefully, we can get that by Thursday morning, to get that into the specifics. I will, you know, bring up in the spirit of open discussion that there was, I think there's about 150,000, somewhere around there, in a grant that comes from, someone would have to fill in...
DFAX.
DFAX, to help, to, to help with getting out the word and getting people more enrolled in the SNAP food stamp program that's there. And a question I think is worth discussion because there's no question that this is good work and the scope is really wonderful in terms of outreach. But how much do we want this to grow? I mean, the two, you know, the two positions there that are, there are two extra positions that are paid for by this grant, plus some of that money also being used for some of the salaries, including salary raises that happened this year. And I'm not quite sure how much they were. And I think that was one of the things I wanted to understand more. So that was, that was new information for me. And the question of this as a continuing expense, that's a lot of, those are a lot of positions over a long period of time. And I think it warrants some discussion of the funding and the commitment among the commission.
Right.
I don't, I don't have any answers.
Well, we, well, we did, we did ask Tim to also bring us like a bare bone, what you gotta have, and what you would really like before Thursday. So we'll have something to compare it to when we have, go into our discussion.
So we'll anticipate more discussion of this in our budget deliberation on Thursday?
Yeah. I did want to comment on Commissioner Parker's comment. Exhibit A pretty much covers input from the neighborhood leaders. I think Commissioner Parker's idea about input from the neighborhood leaders is excellent. I love talking to boots-on-the-ground folk. I do want to suggest, if we do go in that route, we may need to be looking at that with everybody, that we have some kind of process that we are getting those workers' input. So it's, so it's not just enough to say, let's get input from the neighborhood leaders. But any other programs, anywhere else we deliver money or have agreements, this could be something that we need to plan for. So I do think the neighborhood leaders' Exhibit A logic model does start that conversation. But I do want to, I do want to say, if we, if we start here, we need to be prepared for other groups. And it's not wrong. But, you know, I'm just putting it out there.
And I would anticipate that kind of through our engagement with independent agencies and sort of like organizations that spring, that would probably be when we would ask, you know, at least the director to come forward with some of those prospective programming modifications, as we've seen with some other entities, just some, including state departments like the Health Department. Manager Williams, any follow up?
Well, you know, we have a contract, and they, they provide a proposal. So on their end, if they want to facilitate the input of the workers, you know, and we have lots of contracts with outside entities. So if that's a preference for those folks to facilitate with their workers for input on scope, you know, as far as staff helping to do that, you know, we just have a contract with them, and we expect them to bring forth something for y'all's approval.
Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to 17. This is Mayor's Commission Designation of Additional Paid Holidays per Section 1-9-7B2H of the ECC Government Personnel System Code of Ordinances. Commissioner Hul?
Very excited about this agenda item, and I intend to work on a CDO, which I welcome any and all of you to co-sign if you'd like to go from two to four here. As I understand it, I don't want to speak for staff, so I guess I'll invite the manager to speak to his thoughts on this. But I would like to add, in addition to the two days outlined here, which are Veterans Day and Juneteenth, Earth Day, and Indigenous Peoples' Day, the latter, you know, being in accordance with a resolution that we passed last year, I think both of them being in line with the values of this community. Two things of note, they both fall during months where we would have no holidays. So it provides a break at a time when it might be appreciated extra. And it would also set us on par with the state. So as we're struggling to recruit and retain employees in the public sector, us having 13 total would make us the same as the state of Georgia's employees at 13 total. And now seems as good a time as I need to also mention that I'd love to see if there's a way, despite it being on short notice, for us to establish June as Pride Month here in Clark County as well, probably as a separate agenda item, I imagine, or a proclamation from you, perhaps.
All right. Thank you. All right. Going to move on to 18. This is Simply Placehold for Adoption of the FY23 Operating in Capital Budget, which again, we'll discuss at length in our Thursday work session held by Mayor Pro Tim Myers. We'll note where that Commissioner Denson has arranged a public meeting for members of his district at the Normal Bar at 6:00 p.m. tomorrow evening at 1365 Prince Avenue, if any member of the public would like to engage with him there. So I want to put that out there. All right. 19 is the SPOS 2011 Jacobs Project Management Company Program slash Project Management Professional Services Contract Amendment and Budget Ordinance. Any input on this item? Everybody okay with this on consent? Commissioner Thornton?
It's not actually on this one. I'm sorry. On item 17...
Yes.
Commissioner Hul said that he was going to do a CDO. So we are taking that off of consent then?
Yeah, it's off consent right now.
Okay.
It's our new business.
Thank you.
Everybody okay with 19 on consent?
Yes.
All right. All right. 20 is the SPOS 2020, project three, the Classic Center Arena. And this is the Proposed Construction Contract Change Order Number One, a common occurrence in these large-scale capital projects. Any input on this item?
I don't have specific input at this point, but I would like to leave this off consent because discussions at the Classic Center Arena have frequently been of interest among folks in the labor justice community. And I do think it's important for them to take these opportunities to express their feelings about the project and its development. So in anticipation that some of that input makes them forward, just making sure that we leave some space for ample discussion.
Great. Yes.
I just wanted to request, if Steph could give us an update on the status of that advisory group that I believe a couple of labor advocates were appointed to, just if there's a way to get an update from the Classic Center and staff on...
I do know generically, Commissioner, that the advisory group regards that piece of property where Willow and Hickory intersect, and given the flux with Classic Center activity, that development of that property is somewhat on the back burner. All right. 21 is sort of in concert with two items we approved last month, congressionally directed spending, and this would be through Senator Warnock's office regarding fresh food access and affordable housing. And so look for more details on that in the next couple of weeks. Item 22 is the accelerated concept recommendation from the ARPA Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and that committee did meet this morning. And I'll just note that we, in concert with staff, were able to arrange a calendar in which we would see some projects being directed prior to the end of this calendar year. So somewhat compressing the timeframe a little bit, but retaining a formal process of submission, review, and then award. And so you will see, I think, System Andrew Jones, in the next few days, an agenda item related to this.
With timeline as well.
With timeline. All right. Now is that exciting time when we will receive staff reports and public input on the two planning and zoning items. So I am going to step on
Okay. I've been given...
Okay, I've been given clearance from the mayor to go ahead and get started, so I will go ahead. We've got two for you this evening to discuss. First is 110 Voiles Road. This is a planned development request to rezone from employment industrial to an employment industrial PD. Expansion of this is up the RWDC facility, the old DuPont facility out off of Voiles Road. Significant expansion as part of the planned development. There are some waivers, which is really what drove the PD need, and it's largely the first one that you see there. We currently have a 65-foot maximum height in our employment industrial area due to the nature of some of their kind of cutting-edge technological advances that they are making in what they do. They need a portion of the building to go up to 100 feet in the air for the equipment that is inside. That's requiring a waiver, but as you'll see in a minute, it sits well back off the road. They also have parking out front, but again, it's really a product of the fact that there has been a plant there for many, many years, and that they're limited in where the parking can go, and then requesting a significant decrease from our minimum parking requirements based on the square footage of the facility from almost 1,300 spaces down to under 500. See the facility here, outlined really only that portion that where the existing plant is, and to the left is part of this and being put into the plan development that you see here, going to the EIPD. Property to the right of that with the pond on it is part of their campus as well, but is not included as part of the PD. And then you see here, this is the existing plant at this point. All of this is the new expansion along with administrative buildings. This would come out front, almost out to where the sign is, it sits out in the middle of the yard area now, and then some added parking, also significant landscaping, tree plantings along the road, frontage. That in conjunction with existing grade out there is going to go far to provide a good screen for that parking that is being added out front. And then you can see here, the phases, that back corner of Phase One, which is really about the back, two-thirds of the new building, is where you see, just in that corner, is where it steps up to 100 feet in the air, and that is for equipment inside the building. The rest of it will meet our current square footage requirements. And the Planning Commission recommendation is to approve.
Thank you, Brad. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this item for three minutes?
Good evening. My name is Justin Crichton, and I'm a senior planner with WNA Engineering. Here tonight on behalf of RWDC representing this application. I won't have too much to add to staff's report, I think they did a very good job summarizing it. But the intent of this request is to allow RWDC Industries to expand for the long-term growth, add production facility as well as an office. And I think staff did a very good job going through the waivers. I'm happy to answer any questions about the specific nature or the reasons why we need those waivers. But with that, I'll go ahead and conclude my remarks and be available for questions at the meeting.
Thank you, Justin. Anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, this is in Commissioner Thornton's district, District Nine. Commissioner, any comments?
No, I, I'm excited about having economic growth and development in my district. This area is, is not residential at all, so I don't expect there's any conflicts with neighbors. I think it's a good advancement for Clark County as a whole.
Thank you, Commissioner. The others? Right, definitely glad to have this employer in the community that done great work just in terms of their, their core product, and certainly a high-wage employer that we are lucky to have here. All right, moving on to item 24.
Okay, second of two this evening. This is 1010 Oglethorpe Avenue, is a, again, a planned development request from asking to rezone from an RS eight single-family residential to an RS five planned development. One, 1.85-acre parcel going from the eight to the five with the PD, a lot of waivers. This is a, this is a kind of a combination of a cottage court development mixed in with a more traditional missing-middle housing option as well. That going into a single-family zoning district, as we pointed out in our report, we would expect there to be several waivers associated with this type of mixing of units under this type of a zoning designation, and you see them noted in your report, they are there. It's a, it's an increase in density from what we estimate as own to be about seven single-family lots by right. PD proposes 24 dwellings, so it is a significant increase in, in the number of units, but it is also, and I'll show you in a minute, it's a mix of multiple different types of units on the property. Their report indicates that the intent at this point would be to sell those units as more than likely either condominium or a combination of condo and fee simple on the single-family detached dwellings. There is access off of Oglethorpe as well as an exit on to Nottingham. The RS five zoning requested with the planned development is compatible with the traditional neighborhood future land use. See the property here, this is kind of a large lot at the corner of Nottingham Drive, backing up the homes on Davis Place. You see here a little better context, this is an existing older neighborhood, this one lot, just under two acres. Going from eight to five, which is still compatible with the future land use plan. And then the proposal for the development you see here is a combination of single-family along both sides here that are kind of arranged in a cottage court. You've seen a couple of these cottage court developments come before you in the past, a duplex that would be the terminus of the green space here, and then you've got a couple of carriage house-type garages with smaller units over the top there and there. The existing house would be converted to two residential units and common space for the development. And then it would be duplicated with two additional fourplexes that would flank towards Oglethorpe on either side of the street, four units in each one of those buildings, small bungalow here, and I believe another carriage house here. The parking is all common along, this would be the eastern side of the property. There's about 50 spaces total when you count those. The eight that are being proposed on Nottingham Drive is on-street, and then the garage spaces. Then you see, this is the mix of unit types that they're proposing. These would be the individual, single-family detached units, an example of the two new builds that would be fourplexes. And I, the way they've explained it to the Planning Commission is these are, they're almost vertical quarters of that house, that it won't be flats. Each, each quarter of the unit will be a two-story townhouse, and it's kind of just split four ways in the middle, where I think they could sell them as townhouse-type condominiums. That's at least, that seems to be the intent at this point. So the Planning Commission recommendation is approval with conditions. They did discuss the, the proposed housing affordability as described by the advocate, as well as the appearance of various housing types, as they look like single-family. They were very interested and excited about the fact that the existing house on the property will be preserved and renovated. The one condition that they did ask for is to revision of the tree management plan, which has been met. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Is any member of the public here to speak to this item?
I just have a question. I didn't sign anything out. I just, that looks like a really nice.
You can come to the podium to speak to this item.
My name is Leslie Senyard, and I'm not in that district at all. 1.85 acres for 25, for 24 units is pretty horrible, honestly. And if I were those neighbors, I would not like this at all. We had an issue with this on Five Points where somebody wanted to put 10 units on about two or three acres not too long ago, and, and we, we had to fight it. So this looks real neat on that paper, but that's a lot of units for one, for less than two acres.
Thank you, Senyard. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
My name is Matt Hall. I live at 825 Hill Street, and I'm the applicant, or I represent the applicant, I'm one of the applicants. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit about how we got going on this project and why we're proposing what we're proposing. We're not developers, I'm a law professor, and I'm also an affordable housing advocate. I've been working on Mayor Gertz's Inclusionary Zoning Working Group with Dr. Commissioner Parker and Commissioner Denson for over a year now, and before that, I chaired the Planning Commission's Affordable Housing Working Group. And it was in the context of that work that I became aware of how Athens Clark County's antiquated Jim Crow-era zoning regulations, which are designed to keep housing artificially expensive by creating an artificial scarcity by requiring very large lots, which then dictates very large square footage, because that's the way developers make money when they have to pay a lot of money for large lots. And so that's the problem, and that's how we got started on this project. We saw the property for sale a little over a year ago, in March 2021. It was being marketed by Fred Mormon, who owned it at the time, as a development opportunity to do something like Parkside at Normaltown, which is to say, a bunch of very large, very expensive houses, the most recent of which I think has sold for around $675,000. And I'm not a fan of that project personally, and I think it's not what Athens Clark County needs. We don't have a lot of decent-sized parcels left that are good for infill development. And builders build stuff like Parkside because that's what our zoning allows as-of-right. And if we were about trying to make, you know, the maximum amount of money on this project, that's what we would have done a year ago, and we would have sold them by now and been done with it. But instead, I got some friends together, and we got some money together, and we bought this property to prevent something like that from happening and to build what we think Athens Clark County desperately needs, which is much more affordable, small square footage, small lot homes. So what we're doing here is 24 small units, all for sale, none of them rentals, all owner-occupied. That is to say, we'll only sell them to owner occupants, and we intend to include in the HOA covenants that, an owner occupancy requirement to prevent flipping to investors who would want to rent them, because we're trying to create homeownership opportunities. These 24 units would be one, two, and three bedrooms with an average square footage of about 1,100, and an average price well under $300,000. We think around $265,000, but lumber's crazy, and you know, there's a certain amount of unpredictability in that, but that's what we're shooting for. So it's designed for affordability, and also on top of that, three of the units would be deeply affordable through partnership with Habitat for Humanity and the Athens Land Trust. So that's what we're proposing to build. And I think it's fair to assume that if we're, if we're not able to build this, you know, we'll have to sell the property, and it would likely sell to someone who would do an as-of-right development, which would, again, sell for $675,000, nine big houses that would gentrify the neighborhood by forcing people's property taxes up. So thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to speak to this item?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Bates of Smith Planning Group. I live at 180 Homestead Drive in District Eight, but future District One. Thank you for your time. As a member of the design team, I'd like to address the design. Care was given to proposed structures that matched the scale of the adjacent Nottingham neighborhood, as well as match the existing house on site with the larger structures that we're calling the attached single-family along Oglethorpe Avenue. The buildings were arranged to maximize green and to create a series of outdoor gathering spaces, including a community garden. Also, a common room is proposed in the existing building, which research has proven is essential for creating a kind of a vibrant community. Concerning parking, we intentionally separated parking and its circulation from the front doors for several reasons. One, the creation of green space, also the, the safety of kids and pedestrians, but also it makes, kind of forces residents to walk through the site, and then they have these kind of opportunities for social interaction that currently, when you're parking in your garage and walking in your door, we don't have in conventional neighborhoods, and so we felt that important. We intentionally designed the site to preserve two of the best trees, we thought, on-site. There's a really mature maple tree along Nottingham Drive, and then a pecan tree along Oglethorpe Avenue. And then we are also proposing to plant 47 additional trees, so this site will be lushly The biggest concern we, we gathered from our meetings with the neighbors was the traffic, and we looked at multiple alternatives to kind of minimize the impacts of this traffic. And we kind of landed on the design that is here, which has, you know, a couple of options to prevent bottlenecking, but we wanted to reduce the cars circulating through the site and Nottingham Drive, so the, the drive kind of bisecting the site from the parking to Nottingham Drive is a one-way drive, kind of exiting out. And so a majority of the traffic is intended to, to come on and enter and exit on Oglethorpe Avenue, which is kind of a mixed-use corridor that has an average of 11,000 trips a day. And so we kind of wanted to keep circulation as much as possible out of the, the adjacent neighborhood, you know, but the reality is with traffic, what's really important is connectivity is really, and so we always try to incorporate as much connectivity as possible. I know this development is unconventional, but it is traditional in how we designed things and built things prior to the automobile, and we are trying to push back with sprawl, against sprawl on this kind of a project. I think I've run out of time, but thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Joseph. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, hearing none, we'll come for discussion. I think Commissioner Denson is on the phone, and this is in his district, District Five. Commissioner, you there?
Yeah, I certainly am. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I am pretty excited about this project, and I support the Planning Commission's recommendation. I think, you know, this project is really forward-thinking, and a lot of our goals that we have as community of trying to create more affordable housing, create that missing middle housing, and also try to encourage homeownership, especially Athenians. And, you know, there definitely have been some community concerns, many of them around traffic, which was already stated there, and definitely some, some residents who just don't want to see any development happening there at all, you know, which I don't think is really an option. But I appreciate the, the developers have agreed thus far, they've already held in tandem with myself and Commissioner Hool, three community meetings. I'm gonna keep on, you know, meeting with residents and the developers to try to continue addressing concerns while we move through this process. But I did have just a couple of questions to staff, specifically on some of the, the traffic concerns. And this first one, I guess, would be, be to Brad. I know on the, the exit that goes on to Nottingham Drive, the intention from the plan there and talking to developers is to have that be a, a left-turn-only exit, so that we don't have traffic going into the neighborhood. Are there any limitations on what kind of infrastructure we can be there to require cars to have to turn left?
I mean, there are some curb designs, Commissioner, that can be put in place with approval of our Public Works Department that discourage right turns. I don't know that there's any such thing that we've come up with yet that would prohibit them, but it's generally a combination of signage and kind of a raised triangular curb that goes out just short of that first on-space parking lot north of the driveway that would, it would encourage you to move left. Yes, that could, that could be, but I, you know, at this point, I don't know, I think that would need to probably be added as a condition. I don't know that it's clearly denoted or identified on the plan at this point, other than just having been discussed. And so if that's important, just as additional assurance to our Public Works Department, if you wanted that to be put in, I would recommend it be made a condition of the approval.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's very helpful, and I can definitely continue having those conversations with developers and staff. And I think my, my last question is that the staff overall, maybe just a little bit of updates and some guidance that can be given in the future, it's not to be given right now, but definitely was a lot of concerns about just the ability for people, for residents to be able to pull in and out of Oglethorpe, especially during, you know, early morning hours and when Oglethorpe Elementary School is letting out, and also around 5 o'clock, because of the way the loop gets backed up. And so I just had three questions for some updates on some possible ways that we can move forward, and also some of the information. I know one thing, we approved the intersection improvements at Hawthorne and Oglethorpe, and so just an update from staff on where those improvements are. are. And then the other questions are, if there's anything that we could be doing right now, the elementary school pickup line, whenever school is letting out, completely backs up down Oglethorpe, actually sometimes making it very difficult for cars to get in and out at times. If there's any way that we could be addressing that or working with CCSD to address that, I know that's happening at other elementary schools also. And then the last thing is just around the Tin Loop. I know that that intersection with Oglethorpe, Talisi, and the Tin Loop was slated as GDOT, is something that they were going to be working on in their future plans. And if we can just get an update of when, that's kind of been prioritized by GDOT to be worked on.
And Commissioner, you're just looking for those via email?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I think this is a great project. And, you know, Commissioner Denson called it forward-thinking, but in reality, it is very, very traditional. This could be a block in many of our older, in-town, more desirable neighborhoods. It could be a block in Cobham or Boulevard or West Hancock, or even Five Points, where you do have a mix of home types, smaller cottages, and duplexes, multiplexes, or these small apartment complexes, you know, where you have buildings that are of a scale of a single-family home that might have a handful of units in each of those buildings. I think of something like Grady Avenue. And this is exactly what we need to meet our housing needs, to allow people the opportunity to achieve homeownership and achieve wealth. And I'm really excited to know that the developers are working with Habitat and the Land Trust to assure perpetually affordable units. You know, I think this is the kind of development we should be encouraging when it comes to new construction in our in-town community. It's very convenient to transit. There's bus line right on there. There's bike lanes on Oglethorpe Avenue. It's practically next door to the elementary school. There's a whole bunch of shopping and job opportunities within just a few blocks. So quite frankly, you know, people could live here and not ever really need a car.
Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. I have four things, if they could be addressed now or by email later. The first is if we could get clarification on the trees, specifically the placement in size. I know these designs have evolved a bit. As a matter of fact, at the Planning Commission meeting, there were two different designs that kind of showed some trees in different places. And I really appreciate some of the remarks you shared about the intention to plant many more and preserve a couple. But if we could get some more specifics on that, either now or later, that would be appreciated. The second was if and where the item being approved would capture the three affordable units as a requirement. Is, are those captured in this already, or is that something that we're, they're not, I'm seeing?
Could you repeat that question?
If and where in this agenda item, upon approval, we'd be requiring three affordable units, or if it's just that we're sort of taking them on their word here. And it's, that's, to be perfectly frank, less a concern I have about these particular applicants, given how they've conducted themselves, and more a concern I have about if we're seeking this to be kind of a model that bridges the gap between where we're at and where we want to be in terms of changing our zoning code, recognizing it's going to take a while to catch up on that. Finding a way to codify that in here seems important. And as much as I do take on good faith the developers at present, it would also give me a bit more assurance to see that codified as well.
I think Planning Director Griffin is indicating that we would have to have some additional language.
I can get the first two tonight. So give me the next two, and then we'll go through them.
The third was the impact of the stormwater design on cost. Again, just thinking about this project versus others that could happen elsewhere. As I understand it, piping it underground has added a lot to the cost, as opposed to some more traditional approaches to runoff or natural runoff. So just kind of understanding that would be helpful in a bit more detail. And the final thing is if the applicant is willing to include the HOA agreement, or at least some of the terms that would be contained in it as part of the condition for approval. I know there's been a lot of discussion around who the tenants will be here and what the costs or fees would be of the HOA. So something that captures that, I think, would provide a bit more assurance to us as well.
Would you like the applicant to address any of those?
If the mayor deems that appropriate.
Yeah, the applicant would like to speak to those at Commissioner's request. That would be fine, there.
Thank you. Yeah, so the status on the three affordable units is that we have MOU language negotiated with both the Land Trust and Habitat and are awaiting board approval. So there are no signatures on the MOUs, but by next month, there will be, I anticipate. And the stormwater design effect on cost is something that I think our engineers can provide. But you're absolutely right, that detaining stormwater underground is enormously expensive, and the ordinance, as a right development with single-family homes, single-family homes generally don't have to detain stormwater, they're exempt, but doing something denser like this, even though our square footage and lot coverage is the same as an as-of-right development, we are required to detain it. So it's either going to be an ugly surface pond or underwater detention. And underwater detention is enormously more expensive, and you're right that that drives up cost, or rather, it drives down profits in our case. And as far as the HOA agreement terms, we'd be happy to include information about that. The, or if the point of the question is that the owner occupancy agreement, that you'd like that to be a condition of approval, we're perfectly comfortable with that. That's our intention to put it in. We have not yet paid lawyers to write an HOA agreement, because we don't yet, you know, that seems like money to spend after approval, not before. But we're happy to have a condition about that term be a condition of approval, because it's absolutely our intent to include that in the HOA agreement.
And anything about trees while you're there?
Yeah, so the tree issue, we initially had planned to put on the cottage courtyard, on the top portion, that large green space, we wanted to plant some trees in that area. And there's one existing tree that's quite large that's in that area, that unfortunately Public Utilities requires that, because that's where the sewer and water pipes are going to be, there cannot be roots in that location. So it was in response to Public Utilities comments, that we were forced to move some trees around. And so that's what's driven some of the late changes to the tree. The lot is largely lawn. It's more lawn than tree. I think the conserved canopy requirement is something we can't meet, even as the property exists today, because there are a few large, almost dead trees, and some large, very healthy trees, but a great deal of lawn. So we just can't meet the conserved requirement as the property stands.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, yeah, if Seth has anything to add or further clarify, by email, that'd be super appreciated. And I guess just the two final thoughts here is, the other thing in addition to owner occupancy that I'd love to see captured is an estimate or like a cap on what the HOA fees are expected to be, because I know it's been a concern around affordability, or at least some kind of accompanying document that kind of calculates, you know, what they're estimated to be. And then, just as a point of information, again, for future development, like your cost estimates of what that stormwater piping cost would be helpful to understand, too. If you could share those.
All right. I've got a handful of other commissioners. Go to Commissioner Wright.
Thank you. You had asked a couple of questions of Brad. I was Brad that you, and then he didn't get a chance to answer them. The four?
I think largely the applicant answered the same as I would have. I would not have had a number on stormwater, but he's right, it's way more expensive. There is some requirement for a project of by right of six or seven, you would have to do stormwater as well. But a developer's not going to go underground for five or six houses. They would do a separate outlot with a pond on it that was, that served the needs of those five or six houses. The trees, you know, that had to move were these right here. They moved out of the lawn, and they've kind of been pushed out of that easement. They're still there, and then they put some more on some other spots. And then, you know, the issue of the condition of owner occupancy, we would need to discuss that with the attorney's office on an appropriate way to word that. It may be that instead of owner occupancy, they're all required to maintain homestead exemption or something. I'm not sure how you'd really do that. If there is a violation of it, it becomes extremely difficult from a staff enforcement standpoint to knock on doors, because somebody says their neighbor doesn't own it.
Yeah, and they're renting it. Or, yeah, traditional tenants or non-traditional tenants. And then, so the way this is chopped up, each one of these units, or if it's a fourplex or duplex, will get their own stormwater bill?
That I don't know, because the fourplex units would be condo, based on the way it's set up now. And I just, I don't know enough about the nature of the stormwater billing.
Gotcha. It could also be in that.
We might like to, development like Hanson Borough, and just ask Stormwater how that property's managed, which is sort of a comparable setup.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not as thrilled about this density happening on this property in this area of our community. And I hope that everybody will take the time to read the two and a half pages of staff's recommendation to deny it. Make sure that you've read all that. I think $100 a month for a homeowners' association is a very steep amount to go if this is being promoted to be affordable, especially with the way that property taxes are, and escrows that people are going to have every month, as well as principal and interest on their mortgages. And again, saying that they're owner-occupied, I thought that we've not been able to capture that in other developments in any code.
It's been one that has, up to this point, has been, and that's the way we've worded it in the report, too, that it's from a legal and enforcement standpoint to condition it by legislative action that you can't rent it. I think there's probably some legal challenges there, but I'm not an attorney. I would want to discuss that with our attorney's office.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure everybody's working from the same accurate information on it, and make sure you don't miss the staff's denial details and the considerations for the tree management plan. We just had a pretty significant presentation about tree canopy, and I kind of wish this was going where that medical hospital, that medical office, remember when that came on Oglethorpe Avenue, and they tore down a lot of trees and never got built? I kind of wish that this was happening in that bigger parcel. But it's not. And I look forward to the details coming forward from the questions, as well as the email follow-ups.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I plan to read this all very carefully, and don't have the kind of technical questions that some of my colleagues have. But I am actually very excited about this, because it's clear that the only way that we're going to address having enough housing in Athens for people at different levels is to be real creative with how we, or to think in a new way about how we're using our land and our zoning. This is exactly the kind of place that my professional daughter and son-in-law is searching for, who's a landscape architect in this small print with outdoor space. So it's, I think that this is, this is an example of the kind of, the kind of smart towns that I've seen on websites, and I will look more closely at it, but I think it's something we do need to do to address our housing needs. And I really appreciate the efforts that you've made to create the green space and the outdoor space for community building as well. This is at a place where it is, there's three bus lines there. It's, you know, someone who rides on a bike, it's flat. You know, I think about the topography of the community, and this is an area where it is flat, and it makes it easier to ride to over to the hospital area, to Prince Avenue and such. So I appreciate the efforts, and I look forward to reading this more closely.
Commissioner Park?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to start out just thanking the applicants for couching this development, sort of in a sense of historical awareness. We've had a lot of discussions in the Inclusionary Zoning Working Group about the somewhat racial nature of a lot of the zoning laws we have today, and bringing a historic awareness of that into the developments we seek to build, to counteract some of those forces that seek to exclude people from our neighborhoods, is really refreshing. So I really appreciated that, them bringing that to this discussion, and hope that in our future discussions of density, when we do get pushback, folks, you know, being upset about more traffic, which we can and will and should, can and should mitigate. I appreciate Commissioner Denson's questions to that end, just helping bring that awareness into those conversations to help folks understand kind of why we're taking these routes. On the question of affordability and our ability to legislate, or what's the term I'm looking for, to sort of make affordability, make passage of something like this contingent upon affordability, I think previously we have put into a kind of CDO, conditioning the release of a construction permit upon execution of a contract between an affordable housing provider and a developer. So when folks are saying, oh, we're not sure if this is actually going to pan out, and also thinking about the timeline, we're hoping to vote on this in just a couple of weeks, and that might not be enough time to firm up an agreement, but might that be a way forward for us to ensure that, you know, before this breaks ground, we do know that they will make good on the promises laid out here?
I think there's two points. One, the reference to affordability and the ability to use a development agreement similar to what is noted in the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that you all just recently adopted, I think is a tool that could be used for the affordability standpoint. Where I tend to have a few more concerns is whether or not we can regulate as a condition that you also can't live there unless you own it. You cannot rent one of these, you know, from a zoning condition standpoint, if there is a, if there's a basis for us to be able to add that as a condition. I think that's a different issue.
Specifically the owner occupation.
Owner occupancy as a requirement to live there versus the affordability of three of the units, as noted by the developer.
Okay, so even if that is sort of a stated intent by the applicant themselves, and not necessarily something that we are imposing upon them, like say, to say we're approving this, you know, binding development plan, and that's something that they have brought in, that still would not be, that'd still be dangerous territory.
You know, it's, and I think, I truly believe the developers and the owners of this group have the best of intentions.
I believe so as well.
You know, if this were to be approved, though, without some type of legal binding agreement, a development like this could also be sold to a different development group with full intention of it being entirely rental. And that's, this is a little different location, but this one, to me, feels a lot like one that we looked at several years ago on Springdale at Rock Springs, that were also attached units, that because of the location, it became very contentious with the neighborhood. And that's, you know, I think, we just need to look at that. And if that's something that you all, as a commission, put high priority on in terms of a requirement of this development being successful, should it be owner-occupied, or should people that don't have the means to buy but rent be able to live there?
Affordable rents are important, too. I also concur that I think the applicants seem to have a lot of also contextual awareness of our community and relationships with our community. So I don't really share the concerns about whether or not they'll make good on some of the stated intents here, but it's sort of outlining, like, you know, for future consideration, or if other folks would like to see that, you know, some kind of binding agreement here, what options are available to us. So thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Thorne?
You know, we always say, be careful of what you ask for, because we've been asking for affordable housing, and we have a proposal. And I think one of the presenters described it as unconditional, a design that is unconditional but traditional. So that's a lot for the average person. I do want to support Commissioner Parker and Commissioners Hul's questions and suggestions before I get very excited about this. 1.8 acres and 24 units, I can't, 24, I can't visualize that, but somebody has. So I would like Commissioner Denson to be aware that I am getting calls, I had a call today and Sunday about this development, and I don't know anything about it, to give an intelligent answer. I think that, I appreciate Commissioner Denson saying he's going to continue to talk to the residents, but as this thing moves forward, those conversations need to happen on a, like, ASP schedule. Mr. Hill, that there are, and the names of the people that have called me, I'll be glad to, I will share with Commissioner Denson, but I do think that when change happens, people get a little nervous. But I do think that when change happens, people get a little nervous. They don't know what that's going to look like. And I know, I still have questions about the MOU, the HOA, the four... I still have questions. So I do think that one of the things I would like to see a real strong effort to talk to the residents that are having concerns in that area. And you won't get them all. They all won't agree with you no matter what. But you got... I've got to feel good that you made that strong push to help them understand. And I would feel better with a movement, especially dealing with the housing issues that we have. That would be my only comment right now, is that you put some extra energy into meeting some folk. And I'll be glad to give you the names of the people who have called me.
Commissioner Hull, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, I guess, you know, if and when staff and the Attorney's Office is looking into the recommendation of Commissioner Parker around certificate of occupancy being conditioned, if there is a distinction between whether the applicant is willingly bringing it to the table versus we're kind of imposing it as a condition. And to speak to the concern that I know many residents have, you know, this is right across the street from District Six and I've been at most of these community meetings. There's been, I think, five at this point, at least four. And I think those fears and concerns that residents have in the adjacent neighborhood are well-founded when we talk about the history that this community and the people in it have endured and the history of this government's actions and policymaking in the past. I definitely understand why many of those residents, especially as many of them are elderly people of color, why they are so concerned. And that's part of what informs my desire to see some of the really good stuff that we're talking about here codified in some way if and as possible because I think that's part of doing more than just taking this on faith, but really, you know, putting in writing what we're talking about here. And then from there, you know, hopefully we are able to move forward with something that really provides a community benefit, meets some of those missing middle concerns that we're going to get briefed on in a couple of weeks with staff and maybe helps give us some momentum behind a direction to go that's affordable for homeownership in addition to renters.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'll just note, really favorable toward a lot of the design elements of this project. And, you know, as recently as just a couple of weeks ago, had a couple, one of whom is fully retired, one of whom is semi-retired, ask if there was something available like this in the community. When you think about access to transit, walkability and relatively low maintenance, you know, this takes into account many of those. You know, if you look around this community, we mentioned Anson Borough earlier. There's also development on Lumpkin just south of the Five Points Business District that takes into account some of these as well. So there are at least some models comparable already here in Athens, probably not taking into account all of the product types within one development. The other thing that's intriguing, given that there was some conversation about really the zoning elements that presaged our current era that were racially exclusionary, is that some of the very last explicitly racial exclusionary housing covenants in Clark County were very near here. And so I'd be glad to share a Google Doc I have of many of those. In around 1950, those explicitly racial exclusionary covenants went away. And as proxies for those, instead, what were developed were square footage and price point requirements in around 1950. So interesting history very near here. So Commissioner Myers?
I just need a point of clarification here. Has the developer already met with the neighbors in that area?
Commissioner Denson or Commissioner Hull, I know you've been in many meetings.
All of those meetings that we've talked about have been, have included, you know, not canvassing the adjacent neighborhood. And I think lessons were learned in the first attempt around how to more effectively engage folks there to get more of them to come to subsequent events because it's a different constituency that comes to the bar down the street than comes to the fire station down the street. So we've had meetings in both. And I think we've actually heard from a lot of folks in the area. And it's a mix of people who are very excited about it and people who are deeply concerned about it.
And you do have... We received a lot of email comments. You've got those in the back of your packet as well as a petition from, largely from the neighborhood that surrounds it, included.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, members of the public, for joining us this evening. We will move in in just a couple of moments to the executive session portion of our evening.